Yeah, same. I know, I'm like con- I'm like chugging water and like constantly putting on lip chat. No, we're not. I don't know what's going on. Yeah, I don't see what's going on. Live- oh, no, it says we're live. Yep. I'll double check. Yeah, I see it here. The part three is up. For sure. I've got it right here, yeah. Yeah, it's definitely on, yeah. It just wasn't showing up on my screen. Yeah.
Okay, you're missing here. Okay. Okay, we're back. The next item is fifteen Doncaster Avenue. Purpose of the application to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story side addition, a complete second-story addition with a second-story rear balcony, an integral garage, a front porch, a ground-floor rear deck, and a rear basement walkout. For this application, we have materials submitted by the applicant, staff report from Urban Forestry, five form letters in support, correspondence in concern or interest from seventeen Doncaster Avenue, and opposition from twenty and thirteen Doncaster Avenue. Parisa Amiri?
Hi, yes, this is Parisa Amiri. I'm the architect and the agent on this application. I'm at fifty Woodville Avenue, East York.
Okay. Please give us a brief presentation because we have some opposition.
Sure. The fifteen Doncaster Avenue is the Beechers East York area of Beechers, neighborhood that has been started to be operated since ten, eleven years ago. And recently, we are seeing more renovation construction in the neighborhood past three years because the neighborhood is still affordable and a couple who are looking for a condo alternative for the downtown, they are coming to this neighborhood and they are looking for more modern look and clean look and they are, they need space. So these bungalows are starting to be reconstructed. And as an architect who lives in the neighborhood and I'm working in the neighborhood for the past eight years, I'm quite familiar with the neighborhood, with almost all the streets in that area, even from the broad view to the inner street that I'm very much focused on that area to work. And the variances that we are asking tonight on this property are pretty, pretty minor. There is a combination between the proposed and the existing situation. And I've, I'm going over each of them to explain and give the comparison between what has been approved so far, very, very succinct and effective. The proposed addition, we are proposing two-story side addition to this one-story frame dwelling. And we are proposing to demolish the existing detached garage. This, the existing detached garage is more than 10% of the lot area, so it counted toward the lot coverage. And if we consider that, we are only asking for one point, almost less than a meter, a square meter lot coverage. Because the existing detached garage is seventeen point fifty-one square meter and the proposed addition is eighteen point forty-five square meter. And recently, in the neighborhood, seventy-four Gatwick Avenue has been approved for thirty-nine point seventy-sixty-seven. One ninety-six West Lake has been approved for forty-four point seven. And one sixty-one Oak Park has been approved for fifty-seven, fifty-seven percent, which I understand that one has the detached garage as well. For the and again, three fifty-four Longston has been approved for fifty-two percent. These are the, they're very recent since past six months, since June, July, they have, they got approved and I bring them up from the Application Information Center, just to give the understanding of what's going on. The second, and we are asking for thirty-nine point five percent, which I explained, it's less than a meter, a square meter that we are asking, considering that detached garage has been demolished. The second one is the overall height variance that we are requesting is the bylaw height, overall height is point, eight point five meter. And they are requesting for nine meter, nine meter is pretty standard that has been approved, like I can explain. A lot of cases that has been approved, approved in East York for nine meter and that's why we don't have any comment from the planning department as well on that, that report. And considering the house, the, if we have, if we can have the front elevation up, the house is a slope roof from the middle and so like, yeah.
Miss, Miss Amiri, Miss Amiri, your, your almost, your time is almost up and you're, you're I, I don't think, I don't think we need examples of a height difference of point four nine meters.
Okay, sure. And regarding the FSI that we are asking, again, eighty-one percent is very within the limit that has been approved so far. The, the bylaw is seventy-five percent and item number five that we are requesting is the existing porch situation. We are altering that existing porch situation and we are adding the little privacy wall toward the west, toward the east side of the, of that porch. And the examiner counted as the architectural feature that's, and he said it needs to be three feet away, but that one is the existing situation and the existing situation of the porch didn't have the three feet side setback. Again, for the E-Bus drop that we are asking for the side setback, it's the existing situation of the east wall, which the setback is very limited and it's twenty-five centimeter existing. My client wanted to have the slope roof and we just extending six, another six inches for the roof, for the slope drainage.
Miss, Miss Amiri, Miss Amiri, your time is up. If you could just wrap up, please.
I'm, to wrapping it up, we consider this application is very desirable in the neighborhood and there is it's a very minor in nature, the variances that we are asking and it's, it fits within the upcoming neighborhood and the operating neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any question.
Yes, Larry.
Sure.
I was checking, looking at your letters of support and I noticed that you had five form letters. And when I looked up the addresses, I couldn't really find them in the immediate vicinity of the neighborhood. In fact, I don't know where they are from. And I'm just wondering why you would include letters of support from people so far away who aren't really affected by this application? And whether you have any letters of support from people who are actually either adjacent to or immediately close to this proposal?
The letter of support has been prepared by the owner and has been sent to the committee of adjustment directly by him. They, they are his friends that they are living in the neighborhood, they are not immediate neighbors and they are, they know them toward the work and toward the community that they're, they are attending to. So this has been prepared by the, by my, my, my client directly.
I would just suggest to you that that's not particularly helpful for the committee when people write in from some distance away. It's really quite irrelevant to us.
Thank you. David Carter?
Do you, Mr. Chair, several attempts were made by phone and no response to email either.
Kyle, Kyle Gedge?
Oh, there we go. Hi there. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for hearing us today. My name's Kyle Gedge. I work, I live at thirteen Doncaster Ave., which is the property directly to the west of the property, fifteen Doncaster. I'm also, on the line with me today is my wife, Brandy Harwood. I'm just gonna kind of reiterate our written submission that that we, we live next door and so we've raised a few objections that we've sent in by email and I know those were captured already online. We're, we're quite, we're quite concerned about the, the number of variances, but we're really mostly concerned about the impact that it's gonna have on our quality of life. We do, we live in a bungalow. We lived here for fourteen years. The proximity of the property, as proposed, to our east-facing wall will block the sunlight that comes in the three east-facing windows that we have. We're also concerned about how that proximity, you know, I'm not an architect and neither is my wife, but looking at the architectural drawings, it looks like there's gonna be about three feet space between the two properties once this is built. Concerned about having access to that side of the house on the east side for repairs and maintenance, just something as simple as cleaning the windows or the chimney or emptying the, the contents of the gutters each season. We're concerned about at the back being overlooked by both the deck, which is a variance, and then there, I believe, is there's a walkout deck from the master bedroom. We do spend quite enough, quite an amount of time in our backyard in the summer. As I say, you know, we live in a bungalow, so it's a smaller space and we tend to spend a lot of time outside with our daughter when the weather is nice. So we're concerned about privacy and being overlooked. We're concerned about the overall impact. We're also concerned about this rear walkout. And we're just wondering, you know, the way that this is kind of proposed is a two, a two-story, but with this rear walk, walkout, I'm wondering if this is more like a de facto three-story dwelling. And then I'm also concerned, we're both concerned about, you know, if this is put forward, it's, you know, it's out of character with the neighborhood to date. There are any other houses on this part of the block that are of this size and magnitude or proximity. We are also adjacent on our west side to another bungalow and the lady who lives there is elderly and I, I, you know, she's a great neighbor, but at some point, I imagine she will move out. And that property will probably come up on the market as well. And we're concerned that there's gonna be a precedent and we're gonna have something like this on both sides of us at some point in the near future. And then I, I know our, our neighbor across the street raised a written objection, Mr. Embry at twenty, twenty Doncaster. I believe he's on the call and I hope he's gonna speak today. But I would echo his comments and I know Mr. Clay on the committee had raised questions about the five letters of support. It looks to me like these must be associates of the applicant. And I would further ask the architect, Ms. Amiri, who's on the call, I believe she stated her address was fifty Woodville in East York and that appears to be a property that is being leased. It's a bungalow. So Ms. Amiri, who is apparently the architect, is living, she's saying she's living at this property at fifty Woodville, which I believe is a, is a property that's being leased by the person who is making this application for all these variances.
And, oh, and the, the form letters, the addresses are all under construction or abandoned?
Yeah.
Or look abandoned?
Yeah, these are all properties that are in the neighborhood that are being developed similarly. So I, they're clearly not letters of support from people who welcome this change in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Embry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I'm Wayne Embry. I live at twenty Doncaster Avenue. I'm also speaking for Kelly Richardson, who at twenty Doncaster.
Yes?
Yeah, sorry. Good evening. Thank you to the committee. I'm here to express opposition to the application for eight minor variances at fifteen Doncaster Avenue. Request does not satisfy the four tests set out in section forty-five one of the Planning Act. It would amount to an undesirable overdevelopment of this property and set a worrying precedent for a very stable neighborhood. I respectfully ask that the application be refused. First, I'd like to mention the form letters of support. I'm, I'm concerned by the form, five form letters dated October eighth. The addresses of the letters appear to be linked in a business or real estate development manner to the owners, developers, architects at fifteen Doncaster Avenue. A number of orders to comply have been issued at several of the addresses listed on the form letters. None of the properties are near fifteen Doncaster, as was mentioned, and the optics for me aren't good. Secondly, my main concern, the variances are not minor. Variance two, three, and eight regarding height. The combination of these height variances would result in a house that would dominate the landscape. It would loom over the, the other homes, including mine, with giant oversized windows and front jet out. The drawings make it look like a flat house with a tiny slope roof added as an afterthought. I can't help but note that the permitted maximum height of a building with a flat roof is seven point two meters. From my perspective, two doors away, the proposed house gives the appearance of being three stories because of the large raised above-ground basement height that is out of character for our area. Variance one, lot coverage, the proposed increase in lot coverage is to almost forty percent versus the thirty-five percent permitted is not minor. I'm concerned about increasing pressure on city infrastructure in relation to drainage and runoff demands. Compound increased lot coverage with moving to five bathrooms, two laundry rooms, and a, and a basement stair rainwater drains and the environment, environmental impacts are troubling. Variance four, floor space index, an increase in the permitted floor space index from point seven five two. Point eight one is not minor. The difference between the requested one hundred eighty-eight meter squared and the allowed one hundred seventy-four point two meter squared is almost fourteen meters squared and quite enormous given the modest bungalows and the story and a half homes that dominate our street. Variance five, six, and seven, lot lines and setbacks. There is a lost opportunity here to increase airflow, light values, improve drainage, and enhance overall streetscape, the overall streetscape, excuse me. My third and final comment concerns a recent committee of adjustment hearing. A development request for an overbuild at twenty-three Doncaster resulted in a September twenty-twenty COA hearing. The COA stated that our neighborhood was remarkably uniform and being very low scale with a lot of bungalows and that even a two-story eight-point-five-meter house would be well over the height of most of the homes in the area and the FSI that goes along with it. The owners of the property reconfigured their proposal to fit within the zoning bylaws, including reduction in height, floor space index, and lot coverage. The finished basement will be underground for the most part and will not impact the local streetscape. In conclusion, as a thirty-year resident of Doncaster Avenue, I've seen my neighborhood change incrementally. Homes have been renovated and expanded while respecting the prevailing heights, massing, and scale of the area. What's being proposed at fifteen Doncaster doesn't follow this sensitive and gradual development pattern. It doesn't fit the existing physical character of our street. On a granular level, it will impact my privacy, light, views, and quiet enjoyment of my home. More importantly, it negatively impacts my plans to retire here and enjoy a neighborhood I thought was protected by local bylaws and codes. Thank you very much.
Miss Amiri?
Yes. I'm going over some concern that they have. First, they, they are they looked me up and they said fifty Woodville is the lease. No, I'm the owner of the fifty Woodville. I am the sole owner of the fifty Woodville and I'm living in it. I was living at seventy-one Parker Avenue for six years. I designed it myself and I built it myself. I recently moved to this new location, which is the bungalow and I, I like the area and I'm enjoying it here. So, no, it's not leased. Regarding the point that thirteen Doncaster brought up regarding the view and the sunlight, we are not asking for any side variances. Actually, we are not asking for any kind of variances for the side, front, and back regarding the, this addition. The only thing that we are asking is for the E-Bus drop on the east side that we are asking for the side variance, not the west side of us, which is east side of him. And after the garage proposed, the setback is four feet from our property. They are proposing three feet from our property at the length of the garage and if we can have the basement, it will show it. After the garage, we are proposing four feet setback from our property line, which together with his property is two feet, he has three feet, five feet between two, two houses. So it's quite enough, especially in that neighborhood, for any repair if it's necessary. For the privacy, we are concerning, we are respecting his concern and we are happy to put privacy screen if it's something that makes, makes him happy. And regarding the comments from twenty Doncaster, which is all of character and it's not, it's a, it looks like, looks like three-story. and it's not, uh, it's a, it looks like, looks like three-story, the seven, uh, Doncaster has, i- if you look it up, it's, uh, almost, not almost, it's definitely three-story. The first, uh, is the, um, entrance and two-story above it with the, um, a slope roof. And we are proposing a slope roof as well. This is a kind of a design that, uh, it is a slope roof. If you look at the, uh, roof plan, it is a slope roof. It's not a plaque roof. Otherwise, we would have the, uh, variance on that as well. And, uh, in terms of the runoff and grading, everything will be calculated and we'll take care of it at the, um, per- perimeter stages. And the, all the drain will get upgraded because at the construction, they need to be upgraded, when, uh, the washroom is going to, to be added. And, uh, you mentioned about, uh, uh, order to comply about the, the other property which has been mentioned. Uh, as far as I know, there is no, uh, order to comply in, uh, any of those, and all of them are working, and, uh, it's only changes that they have been submitted, uh, to the city and they are waiting, uh, to get it approved. Uh, and I'm not sure how, how come twenty Doncaster would be affected by the, uh, light, which is across the street, and we are proposing something the other side of the street. Uh, again, in our view, the variances that you are asking is pretty, uh, minor in, uh, in nature, and they are, uh, appropriate for the neighborhood, which is changing, and we, we are accepting the changes for the neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any question at the panel.
Very quick. Yes, Larry? Uh, I just wondered if, uh, if you or your client have had any discussions with adjacent or surrounding neighbors on your proposal?
No.
Why wouldn't you have discussions with them?
Uh, the reason is, uh, honestly, we couldn't, we didn't know it's, uh, gonna cause us, uh, this much, uh, problem for them. And, uh, once we saw the letter on thirteen, uh, we prepared, uh, we, we prepared ourselves to be able to present at the panel. And, uh, we spoke, uh, we, we read the, uh, their comments, and, uh, like, as I said in, uh, thirteen Doncaster, he said, uh, they are worried about the light, but we are not asking for the length variance, or we are not adding anything to the length. Actually, the length is fourteen point seventy-five meter, and, uh, I, we are not asking for any side setback. So it's kind of a right for them to build and, uh, the side addition. We are not blocking it. We, you are, it, the length is already there.
Okay. Lisa, did you have a question?
Uh, I, I guess, um, I was, I, I, I'm gonna make a comment in response to what you've just said, but yes, fine, you're not asking for a side, side yard setback, but you're asking for an FSI. I mean, all of these things work together to manage the size of the house on the property. So, um, while you might not be asking for a side yard setback variance, you know, there's a height variance and there's an FSI variance, so, um, all of that plays together, control the size of the house. But regardless, you mentioned seven Doncaster, I believe?
Yes.
As something comparable? How is the height of your house gonna compare to that one? I, I see that one as a two-story, and yours, I kind of read as a more than a two-story with integral garage. You know, it's kind of tricky to, it reads as a three-story, I think, to most people because of the integral garage. So how is your height gonna compare to that one?
The, uh, seven Doncaster is, looks like, is looking, is looks like, uh, the three story because, uh, if you see the, it's a little area on top of the second floor, which is, I believe it's, uh, in a, um, attic area, and it has one, one, um, one window in it. If you count the levels, it's, it looks like, like three. And, uh, the top of our, uh, height is quite similar of this, and, uh, the side even is less than that because this is, the, the, uh, this how, this, uh, slope roof is different than ours. It's, uh, kind of a gatebell roof from the side, but we are proposing, uh, the plans are true, the, for the whole house. The sides are less than the side of this house.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, take it into committee, comments, have a motion? Jim?
Well, I, I have a con, I have some comments, but I, 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 I do not have a motion yet. Uh, I, it's sort of unfortunate that they do, they decided not to work with the neighbors because I can see the, and, um, the confusion or the, the worries of the neighbors because of the list of variances they are asking for. And, uh, unfortunately, they, they, they haven't been able to contact them or get even maybe one support. And, but having said that, when I look at all the variances, uh, uh, like, to me, they, most of them are minus, but the only argument against that probably is accumulated the fact whether it will still be considered minor, uh, because of number of variance. That's my comment. I want to see other people's comment on this too.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm, um, this is a, a neighborhood characterized by small bungalows. Uh, it is quaint, no doubt about it, but these are the kinds of neighborhoods which are inevitably going to be the subject of, of interest from people who, uh, can buy something affordably and, and make changes to it to make it a little bit larger. So change is inevitable, uh, in this neighborhood, on this street. What I do have difficulty with, however, um, is process. And, uh, in this instance, uh, I see, uh, some letters of support that were submitted, you know, from nobody, uh, in proximity to this development. So to me, that's just irresponsible. Um, and more to the point, uh, as Jim points out, and when you come into a neighborhood like this, with a bunch of small houses, a, a well-established neighborhood, and, uh, decide not to even have a discussion, uh, with the neighbors to explain what you're trying to do, and maybe even be open to some changes that they might suggest, it just seems to be, to be, uh, inappropriate in terms of how to do it. I, I know that doesn't necessarily speak to the variances, but this is a, a, a case where, um, you know, the process to lead to this application, uh, went awry. It went down the wrong path, and I think we should try and consider pointing people in the right path to how to actually get an application, uh, supported by neighbors and something that, you know, you know, benefits all. So I, I'm kind of leaning towards not supporting this one, frankly, for those reasons.
This, uh, is, uh, a kind of application we're getting, uh, more and more often. Uh, we had one a few weeks ago, uh, on a street that, on, on this block that was entirely, uh, bungalows, and this person wanted to put in a three-story, uh, house. Uh, there was, on the other blocks, there were, uh, three-stories or two-story houses, uh, uh, and was left to me to decide because it was a tie. Uh, and I, I decided to, uh, vote in favor of the application, but I didn't sleep at night, uh, after that. I told Sabrina that, uh, it was very difficult for me because of the block was so uniform. Uh, but as Larry says, it's inevitable. It's happening, uh, everywhere. I, uh, I, I, I'm not, I, 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 I think that Larry's right with respect to the process. Uh, I think that the, uh, agent leaving it to her client to get the letters of recommendation or support without sort of vetting them is a mistake. Uh, uh, not, uh, discussing the project with your neighbors is a mistake, but I don't think it's our job to, it's our job to encourage applicants to go through the proper process, but I don't think it's our job to punish them because they don't. It's our job to look at the variances and determine whether they're, uh, appro, whether the application as a whole is appropriate. And I see these, uh, variance is, variances, for the most part, is, is relatively minor and, uh, um, with misgivings, I, I'd support this application. Lisa, do you have any comments?
I agree with what Larry has said about the process. I think a big part of this, uh, this process is the process, and I think that the fact that the applicant has not, um, I mean, this is a huge change for this street and this, this, these neighbors, uh, to, to tear down a bungalow and put what I look as almost a three-story house in without speaking to your neighbors, that the houses are close together. Um, I don't understand why somebody wouldn't do that as a courtesy or even in their own best interests. Notwithstanding, uh, I do even have concerns about, while the, the variances on paper are not huge, I understand that if we're looking at it from a numerical perspective, but I think, in my view, it's more than a numerical perspective. We've got to look at in terms of how does it fit? And I, I don't see any integral garages in that area, uh, and what I effectively look at is, is almost a three-story house. So I don't, I personally don't think it fits in with the character of the neighborhood. Um, I think that, yes, well, change is going to happen, but I think that this type of change isn't sort of more of a, a, a change that fits what the neighborhood, that is compatible, more compatible with the neighborhood. So I, I don't support the application for those reasons, but, um, they're slightly different than others, so.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion? Jim?
Um, I'm happy to make a motion and we'll see where it goes on the vote, but, uh, I, I'm, uh, proposing that this application be refused for the reasons for which I and Lisa and I think Jim, uh, may have expressed.
Okay. Second? Seconder? Lisa? All in favor of the motion? Right? Application's refused. Item number twenty-two, one oh-six Lappin Avenue. Purpose of this application is to convert the existing three-story, one-unit detached dwelling into a three-story, four-unit detached dwelling by constructing the new complete third-story addition, a rear third-story, three-story addition, a front third-story balcony and a rear basement walkout. Uh, with this application, we have, uh, material submitted by the applicant and eight form letters in support. Uh, Mr. Brander?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Adam Brander. My address is forty-nine Bolton Avenue in Toronto, and I'm the agent and the architect for the proposal at one oh-six Lappin Avenue.
Okay. Could you give us a very brief, uh, presentation? Uh, there's no opposition, but, uh, you've got a lot of variances, so just give us a sort of thumbnail sketch.
Sure. Um, I'm here to request relief for eight variances. One variance looks at floor space index of one point oh four, where point six is permitted as a right. A research package shows eleven examples of application in study area with variances approved between one point one five to one point five-five, a range greater than this proposal, which would support the application as also minor at one point oh four. Uh, regarding landscape, there's two variances that look at rear yard landscaping. If we look at the site plan briefly, the laneway suite does occupy a portion of the rear yard, which is taking away from landscape possibilities. Um, but aside from access pass, the soft landscaping is maximized. And looking at the side yard setback, extending the building back along the existing setback triggers modest variance for side yard setback, uh, for wall, uh, rear walkout that aligns with it and eaves. The eaves setback is actually improved, um, and with an increased setback over the existing condition. And also to note, the exterior stairs, uh, descend to the basement level, so any concerns of overlook are not present, uh, for the adjacent neighbors. Uh, there's proposed alteration to the front wall by adding units, but elements generally of concern such as front walkouts, duplicate entry doors or porch enclosures are, are not, uh, part of this proposal, and, um, they are none to consider. Another variance looks at interior flooring of secondary suites is not more than forty-five percent, where seventy-three percent is proposed. The bylaw defines a dwelling unit as a living accommodation for persons or persons living together, uh, as a single housekeeping unit in which both food prep and sanitary facilities are provided for the exclusive use of the occupants, where the bylaw defines a secondary suite as a type of dwelling that is located in and subordinate to another dwelling unit. So if we look at the plans, proposed are four separate dwelling units, isolated and independent from each other. There's no dwelling units within another, there's no overlap, and therefore not meeting the qualifying criteria technically as a secondary suite. There's no variance that applies to four dwelling units, but the zoning examiner noted secondary suites nonetheless by a varied interpretation. And in any case, if we look at this, um, should the proposal not to seek, uh, to salvage and maintain the existing structure, rather build new in the R-zone? Um, the, this would be deemed a fourplex. And referring to the zoning bylaw, it shows permitted building types in the R-zone, which include single-family duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and apartment buildings with five or more dwellings. So it would seem this four-unit dwelling situates appropriately within that domain, and general support and form letters, letters has been gathered by the neighbors for this application. And we see this proposal as an incremental contribution towards the city's gentle density initiatives and to address housing demand. So there's nothing objectionable about the proposal and it meets the four tests. Thank you.
Thank you. Paddle, any questions? Okay. Going to committee, any comments, or do we have a motion?
I can start with some comment, but actually, with the list of variances and also the explanation, uh, there's only two stand, uh, stand out to me, but then it been answered to, uh, is number, number three, and the last one that, uh, justifies, uh, it, it meets the four tests. And overall, they have, um, very few support, including one oh eight and one oh seven, which is, uh, they close by. And I don't have any problem with this proposal, uh, overall, and then, uh, uh, I think these units are quality units and, um, um, I mean, it's a quality of the proposal.
All right. Any further comments? All right, Jim, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion for two vote. Uh, I don't see that any suggested, uh, uh, conditions.
All right, seconder?
No conditions.
All right, Lisa, all in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Number twenty-three, three seventeen Heath Street. Purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story detached dwelling by constructing a second-story addition above the existing attached garage and a two-story side addition behind the garage. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, support from three-eleven, and two form letters in. form letters in support, 303 and 257, all Heath Street. Mr. Razalini?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We also have one form letter in support from 284 Heath Street.
Okay. Mr. Razalini?
Yes, good evening, Sir Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marco Razalini from Contempo Studio at 11:40 to Queensway.
Okay. I don't think we need a presentation, sir. Panel, do you have any questions? Okay. Do we have a motion? Yes, Lisa?
Uh, thank you. I, this is, I, in my view, fairly straightforward is one variance here, and I know that they're building, the addition's going to be in line with the existing garage in any event. So I think this fits in with the neighborhood and in my view meets the four tests. So I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application without any conditions.
Right. Seconder? Yes, Larry? All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Number 24. 29, 28 Dundas Street West. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing three-story mixed-use building containing commercial and residential uses by converting the second-story residential space into an office space. The ground floor and basement will also contain office space to be affiliated with the second level. The third story will remain as residential space. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. Mr. Hazel? Hazel?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. My name is Charles Hazel. I'm the applicant and owner of the property along with Jill Taylor, apartment. We are also the architects of record. And thank you very much.
Okay.
Shall I speak to the issues?
No, I don't think, this is pretty straightforward. I don't think we may need a presentation. Panel, do you have any questions? Okay. Comments or want to make a motion? Yes, Yim?
Well, I'd like to make a motion and actually I looked through the file and I think that is a very well-done project and it preserved the look or even maybe, maybe improved the existing look of the building and it's on the main street. And then I think the use is appropriate and I just move for approval with no conditions.
All right. Seconder? Larry, all in favor? Have your approval, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Number 25. 168 Hammersmith Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a third-story addition with front and rear balconies and new rear detached garage will also be constructed with one parking space provided. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant. We have a report from Urban Forestry, seven form letters in support. And we also have opposition from 170 Hammersmith Avenue. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is David Smith, representing the homeowners of 168 Hammersmith, 401 Craven Road, Toronto, Ontario.
All right. Thank you. Could you give us a present, a brief presentation because there is some opposition?
No problem. So before you, it was an application for a very standard three, third-story addition. I, I'd argue that it's very much in keeping with the neighborhood. We're seeking several variances. The vast majority are technical in nature and tied to the existing condition. With regards to, before I go any further, it's worth noting, and it's in the documentation, that we've reduced the number of variances from the, from nine to seven. Two were removed, but it didn't make it up to the city mailer. So you're really, you know, just looking at seven variances instead of nine. Of those, really, there's only two.
Would you tell us, would you tell us, Mr. Smith, which variances you removed?
Yep. So on the city mailer, variances number seven and number eight were removed.
Okay.
So these pertain to the ancillary building, basically the garage in the backyard.
All right. Thank you.
Of the, of the variances that remain, effectively variances three, sorry, two and three are, will say reasonably out of line with the bylaws. For those, I've provided a series of previous decisions from the neighborhood. We are in no way setting any kind of precedent. We fall well within previous approvals, and I think that the application as a whole meets the four tests. I would like to note that the, my clients did an exceptionally good job of communicating with the neighborhood evidenced by the amount of neighbor support and correspondence. And, you know, I'd, I'd further say that the lack of a report from city planning demonstrates that there's no real concern over the proposed development and the nature of variances being sought. If you want, I'm not sure if opposition is here to speak. I know this submitted a letter. I'd be happy to speak or rebut after they speak, if they're on the phone. Otherwise, I could directly speak with, speak to the opposition right now.
Well, no, I, I think we'll wait. I think it's better if you wait until.
For sure.
We're here. Okay. So let us, panel, do you have any questions? Okay. Let us move to Marie Dunn.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello. Hello, everyone. My name is Marie Dunn and my husband here is beside me, Michael Dunn. We live at 170 Hammersmith. We've been here for 30 years and we are the neighbors to the immediate north of 168 Hammersmith. We share a narrow driveway with our neighbors. We first heard about this proposed addition through the letter we received from the COA. So without any prior notice or discussion, this has le, left us feeling unsettled, puzzled, because we thought we had a very good neighborly relationship with 168 Hammersmith from the day they moved in. So we are very upset that this has come this far without us having good discussion and having time to be able to review this. Michael and I are both frontline ICU medical people. We work long hours. We have not really had time to go over all of the variances very clearly and think about where we would like to go with them or what we would like to request. Is it appropriate for me to read my letter? Does everyone had a chance or it's not very long?
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. To the Committee of Adjustment, we are writing with reference to the proposed addition to the above address. We live at 170 Hammersmith, immediately north of the subject property, and write to you today to express our concerns about the proposed addition and to ask for certain conditions to be imposed if the committee sees fit to approve the application. We were not contacted by our neighbors about their proposed addition and were first notified of the work by the committee's letter arriving by mail on September 24th. We were surprised, disappointed to hear about the addition in this way when we would not only be required to deal with considerable disruption during the construction period, but also would be negatively impacted by some of the proposed variances listed in the notice. The lack of notice has made it difficult for us to seek advice and to prepare a full response to the proposal. The lots on this stretch of Hammersmith are narrow, and most importantly, there is a shared driveway between our home and the applicant's. Factors that we feel will need to be considered in the committee's review of the application. There are nine variances. We didn't know that it reduced to seven, but you know, the last we have is the letter listed in this letter, some of which appear to be more than minor and contrary to the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. In particular, we are concerned about the height of the third-floor addition that would block the sunlight currently reaching the south side of our home, casting our living, dining, two bedrooms, and part of our rear yard into a shadow for a significant part of the day. Prior to the committee making a decision, we request that the applicant be required to provide a sunshade study to establish that there will not be a significant loss of sunlight reaching our property. We are also concerned that the third-floor windows on the north side will allow for a direct view into our en suite bathroom and one of our bedrooms. In addition, the excessive variance to allow the proposed rear third-floor balcony will produce an unacceptable invasion of our privacy. Lastly, we use our driveway and garage on a daily basis and are concerned about the impact of the proposed construction on our ability to function day by day. If approved, we respectfully request that the committee attaches a condition that the mutual driveway will not be used for staging or storage. We appreciate you acknowledging and allowing us to address these, these issues. So the nine, of the nine variances, the one, the ones that are most concerning to us are the one, number two, the maximum permitted height of all side exterior main walls facing a side lot line is 7.5 meters. The height of the side exterior main walls facing a side lot line will be 9.41 meters, so significantly more. The other is item number four. The maximum permitted area of each platform, so would be the balcony, located at or above the second story of a dwelling is four meters squared. The area of the rear third-story balcony will be 8.4 meters squared. This will look right onto our backyard, which we have landscaped, our deck, which we use regularly, so, and, yes. So we personally are not against houses being improved or expanded as long as it's done in a sensitive manner. So we request, we, that we have an opportunity to discuss the variances and building plans with these neighbors. Before the Committee of Adjustment makes a decision, if that's possible.
Yeah. Well, we're going to make a decision today unless you ask for a deferral. You're asking for a deferral?
Yes. I guess that would be, would that allow us time to discuss with our neighbors?
Well, that's the purpose of a deferral. However, we, you've already, you've already, you know, you've already dealt with the merits, so. All right. All right. So, Mr. Smith?
Yes?
Yeah. What are your comments and rebuttals, sir?
I, I have several. So I'll start with the beginning and work through as briefly as possible. It is unfortunate that my clients did not have a chance to reach out personally in advance. As the, as she noted, the city mailer arrived in the mail September 24th. We are at a hearing on October 20th. My clients have met with them more than twice and conversed over email about this and have made many efforts to try and reach some kind of agreement. As demonstrated by all the other letters of support, as egregious as it was that they were notified first by the city, which was no fault of my clients, I mean, they have two kids, everybody's surviving the pandemic with more than enough to do, nobody took it personally that they found out about this a month in advance. I mean, I don't know what the threshold is for, for letting people know, but I thought that, you know, because again, my clients were very upset that the, the reaction was as it was, that they hadn't informed them sooner. And I'd said, well, you know, you're doing the best you can, and it's still a month. This isn't a week before the hearing. Notwithstanding that, if staff could bring up my cover letter and supporting materials, I think I can speak to the other comments a little bit more effectively. If you could turn to page five and blow it up, what I want to demonstrate is just the relationship, page five, yeah, so one more higher. And if, yeah, scroll up, perfect, just leave it there. So, so 170 is obviously above, 168 is in the middle, 166 is south of that. So it's true that we're separated by over eight feet of driveway. So I, I'm a bit hesitant to say that impact down the side of the building is such that it is, you know, unacceptable considering the relationship of these buildings. In fact, 170 benefits from the fact that 168 sits far forward on the property. So any development of 168 height-wise doesn't, you know, impact their backyard. We see that there's a tremendous amount of tree canopy in and around that again impacts light and all of that. If staff can scroll down, the next three pictures are helpful as well. So if you stop there, so this is a shot of 166 to the south and 168 with the gray. So the balcony walkout off of the back of the new third floor sits over that small rear addition, the two-story build-out on 168. If staff can scroll down a little further to the next image, so this is now moving towards 170. And if we go one more picture, or perhaps two more, yeah, so one more, one more. We'll note that 170 benefits from almost exactly the same balcony. And although this isn't a comparative argument, it's worth noting that both 170 and 166 have a similar-sized third-floor addition, as do most of the properties in this area. And I know this is a sort of tit-for-tat discussion, but i, it's a bit, it's just worth pointing at, let me put it that way. With regards to the variances being sought, again, particularly with the side yard, the side wall variance, this is typical in trying to build a third floor where you're using the existing slope and structure of the roof system to keep the aesthetic and you're dormering out the sides. So naturally, the side walls have to come up on some level above the permitted. With regards to the third-story balcony concern, again, I'd argue that the 8.4 meters being sought is well within acceptable standards. The standard of four square meters is very, very small, and I've seen approvals for much more. Again, I've submitted a series of approvals of previous decisions, the first of which, if you wanted to pull it up, is 144 Hammersmith, where they were approved for effectively everything we've been seeking, and they're just down the street. So again, I'd, I would, it's my humble submission that this application indeed meets the four tests. Its impact on 170 is limited, and I think it's completely appropriate and in keeping with both the intentional, the official plan and the zoning bylaws. And I would, I confidently submit that it's worth supporting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, panel? All right. Let's take it into committee. Any comments or do we have a, yes, Lisa?
Uh, I, I understand what the neighbors are saying, but I, when I looked at the materials for this one, and the materials are very well-done, the photos and the 3D aerial photos and whatnot. And I actually feel like this is going to fit in with what's currently in the neighborhood. I don't see there being, you know, in my view, any adverse impact. I, I didn't notice until Mr. Smith pointed it out that there was a balcony on the rear of the, similar balcony on the neighbor's property. But in any event, I thought this, I thought this was, is going to be something that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and I'm in support of the application myself. I don't have any concerns with it.
Any other comments? Okay. Lisa, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll bring a motion forward for approval of the application. And the motion, I guess, as a, the application has amended with the removal of those two variances. So motion for approval and subject to Urban Forestry, condition number one.
I have a note, number two.
I thought it was number two.
Number two, then.
Right. Okay. Seconder?
I'm second.
Okay. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. Number 26. 18 Radford Avenue. Purpose of the application, to alter the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition. We have with this application, a material submitted by the applicant, two form letters in support from Radford, 16 Radford and 19 Indian Trail, and interest and concern from 29 Indian Trail. Mr. Kiefer?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Jason Kiefer and I'm the designer on this project, representing the representing the homeowners of eighteen Radford. And, uh, my address is four one three Sherburne Street, Toronto.
Okay, I don't think, sir, we need a presentation on this matter. Uh, does anybody have any comments, or do we have a motion? Yes, Larry?
Yeah, I think that, I think you're right, this is a very straightforward. The only variance before us is a minor increase in FSI. Um, uh, I think this is an area that can easily accommodate the, uh, uh, the proposed, uh, two-story addition in the rear. Um, I don't think it would have any negative impact, uh, at all on the neighborhood or the adjacent neighbors. So I'm prepared to bring forward a motion to approve this application with no conditions.
Jim, you seconded. All in favor? Have your approval, sir, thank you very much. Number twenty seven. Four thirty nine Vaughn Road. Uh, this is an, an application for consent, to obtain a consent to sever the property into eight undersized residential lots, with three lots each having one parking space located on an adjacent lot and to create easements, right of ways for pedestrian walkways. Part one will have a frontage of six point two six meters from Winnet Avenue and air, and an area of a hundred and forty seven point four square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one rear yard parking space will be constructed requiring variances. Part two will have a frontage of six point two six meters from Winnet Avenue and an area of one hundred and fifty two point six square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one rear yard parking space will be constructed requiring variances. Uh, part three, the lot will have a frontage of six point two six meters from Winnet Avenue and an area of one hundred and fifty seven point eight square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one rear yard parking space will be constructed requiring variances. Uh, part four will have a frontage of six point two six meters from Winnet, an area of a hundred and sixty one point five square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one rear yard parking space will be constructed requiring variances. Part five will have a frontage of four point four two meters from Winnet and six point four seven two from Vaughn Road and an area of a hundred and forty eight point three square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and a one rear yard parking space will be constructed requiring variances. Part six, eleven and fifteen will have a, the lot will have a frontage of ten point eight four three eight uh, from Vaughn Road and an area of a hundred and twenty seven point eight square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one off-site rear yard parking space to be located on part eleven will be constructed requiring variances. Part fifteen will be subject to a, a right of way for the purpose of pedestrian access and egress in favor of parts seven and eight. Parts seven, ten and sixteen will have a frontage of nine point six three meters from Vaughn Road and an area of a hundred and fifteen point five square meters. A new three-story semi-detached dwelling will be with a front third-story deck and one off-site rear yard parking space to be located on part ten will be constructed requiring variances. Part sixteen will be subject to an easement or right of way for the purpose of pedestrian access and egress in favor of parts six and eight. Parts eight, nine, seventeen and eighteen, the lot will have a frontage of ten point five five meters from Vaughn Road and an area of a hundred and thirty five point one square meters. A new three-story semi-detached dwelling with a front third-story deck and one off-site rear yard parking space to be located on part nine will be constructed requiring variances and easements and rights of ways over part seventeen and eighteen. Part seventeen will be subject to an easement right of way for the purpose of pedestrian access and egress in favor of parts six and seven. And part eighteen will be subject to an easement right of way for the purpose of pedestrian access and egress in favor of parts one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, as well as a property municipally recognized as four twenty three, four twenty five, four twenty seven and four twenty nine Vaughn Road. And these applications will be considered jointly. Uh, with this, with these applications, we have material submitted by the applicant, staff reports from engineering and urban forestry, correspondence and support from Ryan Hunter, and correspondence in opposition from three ninety eight Arlington Avenue. Mr. Fordis?
Uh, yes, look, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Uh, my name's Craig Fordice. Um, I'm the principal architect and planner uh, on the file and agent for the owner at four thirty nine Vaughn Road. My address is one ninety seventh Spadina Avenue, Suite five hundred, uh, Toronto. I'm five C, two C eight.
Yes, could we have a, a brief presentation? There is some opposition, I believe.
Uh, for sure. Uh, if, um, the moderator could bring up, um, our presentation materials? I think we had submitted a power, or a PowerPoint presentation or a PDF presentation.
When, when did you submit it?
Um, it would have been submitted, uh, yesterday or the day before.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
That's it. Alright, um, if we go to the, uh, uh, next slide? Uh, so the property is located, um, on the north east corner of Winnet and Vaughn Road. Um, uh, the site had, uh, the Hungarian Presbyterian Church on it, um, which has, uh, uh, this year been demolished. Uh, so the site is sitting, uh, vacant at the moment. Um, if we could go to the next slide, please? Um, to the, uh, east of the, uh, site on the north side of Vaughn Road, our typical, um, commercial, um, uh, built form with, uh, residential uh, above on the second story. Um, that's, uh, four, uh, from four twenty seven, four twenty nine, um, uh, which is the adjacent, uh, uh, image up in the, uh, upper left-hand corner. Um, if you go across Winnet, um, we basically have, um, uh, residential, um, uh, across Vaughn Road, semi-detached, uh, residential, uh, built form. Go to the next slide, please. And, uh, north of the site, um, along Winnet, uh, we have single-family, um, uh, residential dwellings. This is one ninety three Winnet, um, which is, uh, somewhat typical of the, uh, the, the buildings north of, of, of the subject site. Uh, however, one ninety three Winnet is, uh, going under, uh, is, uh, under renovation at the moment. If we could just, uh, switch to the next slide, please? Uh, this, um, uh, this property has been to committee, uh, last year in August, um, where we received, uh, re- uh, approval, uh, for a scheme that had nine lots. Um, it was approval in terms of, uh, the, uh, the variances, uh, requested as well as consent. Um, the consent was appealed, uh, to T-Lab, um, and the owner worked with the, uh, the appellant, uh, who withdrew their appeal. And, um, uh, subsequently, if we go to the next slide, please? The result, uh, was the, uh, the proposal you have in front of you, um, which is reducing, uh, the lots from, uh, nine lots to, uh, eight lots, um, increasing the number of detached homes, uh, from one, uh, to six detached homes, uh, and reducing obviously the number of semi-detached to, uh, to two, uh, that are fronting on, uh, on Vaughn Road. If we go to the next slide, please? Um, you can see those, uh, are the eight, um, homes that, uh, were posing with the two semi-detached on Vaughn Road. Um, the rest fronting, uh, on Winnet with one, um, single-family home on Vaughn Road. If we go to, uh, the next slide, please? Um, as well, uh, an easement in favor of the, um, uh, the buildings at, uh, four, uh, twenty nine, four twenty seven, uh, four twenty five and four twenty three, um, Vaughn Road, so that, uh, um, they can actually access their rear yards and bring garbage to the front on Vaughn Road. Um, there's been, uh, a, a one point two meter, um, easement, uh, allocated to the east side of the property. Um, if we can, uh, go to the next slide, please? Um, generally, the, uh, the, the requested variances are minor in general, uh, per lot. Um, the built form, um, is in keeping with the, uh, the fabric in the, in the adjacent area. Um, we feel that the single-family homes, um, are in keeping with the, um, the local, um, built form in the area. Um, there aren't, uh, uh, variances that are, uh, we feel out of character. Um, so I, I won't go into the, the detail of that yet, but, um, if it comes up in the questions, I'll address any variances that, um, uh, someone may take to task. If we go to the next slide, please? Uh, um, you can see that the aesthetic, uh, that we're, um, uh, using in the Winnet elevation is, um, uh, a modern, uh, uh, type expression, uh, with a step back on the third floor, um, using brick and, um, uh, materials that are similar to the character on the street. Um, as we come around to the Vaughn, uh, elevation, the, the aesthetic, um, changes and, um, um, res- respects the context of the, uh, the commercial built form uh, to the, uh, east of the site on, uh, on Vaughn Road. Um, still maintaining the same, uh, similar massing to the, uh, the rest of the, uh, the built form on the site, on the Winnet, uh, frontage. If you could switch to the next slide, please?
So, Mr. Fordis, your, your time is, uh, uh, up, uh, could you sort of wrap up now?
Sure, yeah. Um, so if, uh, if we can just, uh, uh, skip forward, um, another slide. And one more. Yeah, in terms of the overall built form, we have, um, taken into consideration uh, how the building presents at the, uh, frontage, keeping it to, uh, a two-story, um, uh, feel with the step back, uh, of the third story. Um, as well, we are mitigating overlook in the backyard, uh, by the setbacks in terms of the, the overall distance from the, the building to the rear property line. Um, I'll leave it at that. Uh, we feel that, uh, this fulfills the four tests and is an appropriate development.
So, Mr. Fordis, what, I didn't quite understand what happened at T-Lab. I think you said that, uh, you made the, the, uh, opponent, your opponent withdrew his application, or he made a settlement?
Correct. Uh, yes, the, uh, the, the appellant withdrew, um, and, um, uh, uh, basically was satisfied with the, um, uh, the reduction in, in, uh, units, uh, as well as, uh, the, or, sorry, not in units and lots, uh, as well as with the, um, uh, the easement that was provided, uh, to gain access to the rear of, uh, uh, the adjacent lots, uh, to the east.
So why are you here today? Did you not get approved by T-Lab?
Um, so the T-Lab, uh, uh, basically the T-Lab, uh, um, the withdrawal, um, was not for, um, uh, there was no settlement in the, in, uh, from the withdrawal, it was withdrew before we actually, um, i- it was withdrawn and then the decision was made in terms of, uh, reducing the, uh, the number of lots. The, uh, the developer, um, uh, was in discussion with the neighbors to the, um, to the east as well, who, uh, weren't part of the, uh, the appeal and, um, and was, what he thought was doing the, uh, uh, stand-up, um, uh, thing in terms of, uh, reducing the, uh, the number of lots, uh, on the site and, um, and, and sort of, um, improving the, the project, uh, um, you know, marginally.
So the T-Lab decision was that the applicant, the appellant withdrew? And?
Withdrawed.
And, and, and that was the, and, and, but nevertheless, your client made changes, and this is a new application?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Panel, any questions? Yes, Jim?
Yeah, just a quick one. Uh, this is the development engineer, uh, report, uh, June, is it June seventh? They have mentioned that they have been asking for some revised drawings to, to so, uh, some, some revisions that, uh, to satisfy them. But, uh, 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 unless you have some updates on that, uh, otherwise, they said that they're going to just impose, uh, these, uh, almost seven conditions. Is that what it is now that we only just have to impose those conditions and you do not need to make any revised drawings, or, or you?
Yes, we, we've been working with engineering. Uh, we worked with planning on this actually quite extensively and, and engineering. Um, and, uh, uh, specifically with the nine lots, uh, we had taken that through, uh, the majority of the process. Uh, specifically with the RCS, like the Record of Site Condition, all of that stuff is in motion. Um, with regard to, uh, to engineering and, um, uh, the outstanding conditions, um, we understand that it, it applies to the eight lots the same as the nine lots. Um, so we, we, we will have to fulfill those conditions. We're, we're okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Hi there. Um, so, yeah, Ryan Hunter, uh, I live at four twenty three Vaughn Road. Um, I own, uh, four twenty three Vaughn Road and four twenty five Vaughn Road, and we have a coffee shop out of four twenty three Vaughn Road. Um, I was that guy, uh, I guess. Um, so, um, what I, what I would say is that, uh, obviously there was revisions to that proposal and, and I will, I will say, especially listening to all day today, the, um, not only the, the intent, like, uh, the actual steps of the process, I would say, from, from Conrad and, and, and team, um, of revising that and going back through this process, even though he got his approvals and, and, and that stuff, but also just the, the spirit of it, I, I have to give a lot of credit for the fact that it was done in good faith and, and, you know, reasonable and otherwise. And so I think the changes, considering I live there and work there and all of those things, I think, you know, progress happened, but I think that the, the changes were quite, um, quite reasonable and, and the adjustments made sense, given, given that kind of area and that community and including small things like the angle of the one building on the corner, just from like, you know, car linesite, um, and things like that, and kind of the, the spa- a little bit of extra spacing for the parking and just these, these small adjustments, but were enough that, that for people who are living there have a, have an impact. And, and so I, I think it was considerate and reasonable and done. And even the, the brick changes, I think in the original designs, it was like, I mean, some other colors that kind of match with the rest of the area now and things like this. So there's just a few tweaks that made it, I think, as a person who lives there and cares about that, it, it worked. So I, uh, wrote a letter of support and, and speaking today in support of that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Montez?
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Alexander Montez, and I'm the, uh, property owner at three ninety four Arlington Avenue. Um, so I'm here today just kind of, again, I, I, I wasn't able to attend the last hearing. Um, but today I just want to kind of mention just my concern, just 'cause again, from the principal, I guess driveway or entry that, uh, the, I guess the residents will have access to. Uh, I would be directly impacted, just 'cause again, like, I, just a little bit of backstory. So obviously, young family, I have a four-year-old, I have a two-and-a-half-month-old. Um, obviously, you know, we, we utilize our driveway, which is parallel to the driveway. Um, obviously, you know, we we utilize our driveway, which is parallel to the drive or to the alley uh that they would be accessing, which is Fernandez Lane. Uh, so from my standpoint, it's just how we're gonna like it from a from a mitigation standpoint, from a, you know, from a high-traffic stand, uh from a noise stand, obviously, even within my bedroom, I often hear the cars pass through the alleyway uh consistently through through the day and even through the night. Um, so so my concern is, again, uh, you know, obviously, having only, you know, my the the access to the parking or to the to to the residence area through the driveway or through the laneway that I I live parallel to. Um, it's just more of a concern than I had, uh, and I obviously wanted to just raise it to the committee. And obviously, in good faith, that you guys will make the the best decision uh for for the neighborhood and for the for the area.
So, I don't understand, Mr. Montez. Are you saying that there'll just be a lot more traffic and a lot more noise?
Exactly, even from a from a from the initial construction phase to the once it actually it's all developed. Um, it obviously it's an increase previously, obviously, from from when it was from the previous uh, you know, structure, which was the church, they never had access through to their parking uh through the actual alleyway. It was always through Vaughn Road. Uh, so I think that the assumption was initially that they would at least have access through Vaughn Road, but obviously, that's not the case. They'll continue, or at least in the future state, they'll have access through uh Fernandez Lane, which is, again, parallel to to my my house. Um, and so my concern is, again, from a from a traffic, from a noise standpoint, um, you know, just wanted to kind of, again, just raise those concerns and 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 again, from from a from a young fam- from a from a man that has a young family, just wanted to kind of, you know, um, again, put that out there and and let the the committee make the best decision possible.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fortis?
I mean?
Yeah.
Yep, all right. Um, I, well, I appreciate uh the comment um uh from Mr. Hunter. Um, uh, however, um, I guess, um, uh, we had looked at the transportation sort of uh uh situation um in terms of access to the site uh from a couple of different angles and um uh landed on on access, you know, via the laneway. Um, right now, uh, I think anybody sort of in that area understands that uh the 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 driveway for the church um was coming out very close to the corner of Winnet and uh Vaughn Road, which is is somewhat of a of an odd um geometry. Um, and it wasn't really, um, I would say, safe. So, we think that we've improved the condition, uh, you know, sort of relative to bringing um um our uh traffic in through the laneway, which the laneway is uh is 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 there and is designed uh sort of within the fabric to provide access to uh the rear of the homes um on both uh on on both streets. Um, and um, we think it's an appropriate uh um means of access to the site.
Panel, any questions? Okay, go into committee. Any comments? Or do we have a a motion?
Um, well, I'll start, uh, I'll kick it off, uh, Chair, if that's okay. Um, this was a application that was before committee uh previously, as we've heard. Um, it uh was approved, I think, um, at that point, and then proceeded to appeal. Um, whereupon, you know, those people who were participants to that appeal got together and came up with a solution. And frankly, uh, that's what that process is designed to do, is to try and help resolve outstanding concerns and issues. And uh, when I look at this uh redesigned development proposal, it appears to me uh to be considerably better than it was before. Um, there is a little bit more uh right-of-way and passage uh in behind, and the houses are spaced a little bit further apart. I thought the design going around the corner was actually particularly good and sympathetic to uh the residents and juxtaposition at the corner of the two streets. Um, I get the, you know, concern about traffic in the laneway, and maybe, you know, the proponent can do something to help mitigate that. But I I don't think that's a a factor that um uh would undermine this proposal. Um, so I I I think, given where it's been, given the process that it's undergone and where it's come out, I think this is actually a very supportable uh application that um introduces, again, a little bit more density into existing neighborhoods, which I think we can uh all uh support and um a pretty good adaptive reuse of uh um uh an old church uh site, which was no longer functional. So, uh, I'm I'm prepared to support it. Uh, I don't know if my colleagues have any thoughts to either in support or to the contrary, but I'll leave it there.
Yes, Jim?
Yeah, I just want to add a comment about the laneway. Uh, uh, it's only just serving, I think, the corner two or three cannot use it anyway for parking, right? It's only the the five, uh, we just the five, uh, new uh houses can use the laneway. So, in terms of the number, it's not really that uh like big. And I do not see there's any other alternative um to access the the parking if it's not using the laneway. I don't see any other options. So, uh, I I just agree with Larry. If the developer can actually mitigate the noise in somehow, we, I do not know how, obviously. Uh, I'm actually also in support, and I think it's a great improvement from the last uh proposal.
So, Chair, how do you want to uh how do you want to attack this? And it's a it's a multi thing. Do you want to do severances first or do the consent first and and then the variances?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, do we have a motion, Larry, to?
Sure, I'll move uh approval of the uh uh the individual severances or is there one collective one?
Just one severance.
One severance for all properties. Okay, I'll move uh approval of the severances. Um, I'm I'm, I'll need some advice on four, three, one, and three. Does that apply to the severances or that applies?
Just the severance, so it applied to the whole, yeah, the whole uh not eight, not lots. And also this uh conditions, the development engineering conditions?
Right, yeah. So, there is conditions in the June twenty-second report, uh, so we include that as well. I don't know. Uh, Vaughn, did you get that?
I got it. Yeah, I think it's okay. All right, you second it, Jim?
Yes, I'm seconded.
All in favor of the severance? Okay, now, we have uh variances. I didn't read out them out to you. I assume you've read them all. They're all part of the record. I'm not going to read them out. I don't have any.
Very similar, I think.
Pardon?
They're all very similar.
Yeah. Okay.
So, how, do you just bundle them or do you want to do them individually?
I think we should bundle them. I don't, they're all similar.
Okay.
Is that okay, Sabrina?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, we'll move uh move approval of um the variances for each of the eight uh lots. I won't read out their titles and numbers, if that's okay.
Yes.
And and I'd I'd I don't know, I don't think those conditional conditions are related to the severances, not the variances. Is that correct? Yeah, so this is just move approval of the variances uh for lots one to eight um with no conditions.
All right. Jim, you seconded? All right, all in favor? All right, you have your approval, sir. Thank you. Number twenty-eight. Sixteen twenty-four, sixteen twenty-six, sixteen twenty-eight, sixteen thirty, Queen Street East. Uh, the purpose of this, uh, this is uh to obtain consent to sever the commercial portion of the property resulting in two conveyed lots and one retained lot and to create four new easements rights-of-way that would result in a total of three freehold retail lots with reciprocal easements between these lots. Uh, sixteen twenty-four, Queen Street East will have a frontage of eleven point six-three from Queen East and an area of four seven seven square meters. Uh, parts one, four, five, six, and seven will be subject to an easement right-of-way in favor of parts two, three, eight, and nine for the purpose of facilitating the repair and maintenance of any utilities and services, facilitating the repair and maintenance of any part of the building, rights of support and airflow. Parts four, five, and six will be subject to an easement right-of-way in favor of parts two, three, eight, and nine for the purpose of vehicular and pedestrian access over the retail corridor, the commercial waste room, and the loading area. And sixteen twenty-eight, Queen Street East, the lot will have a frontage of ten point five-four from Queen East and an area of one hundred seventy-eight point two-seven. Parts three and nine will be subject to an easement of a right-of-way in favor of parts one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight for the purpose of faci- facilitating the repair and maintenance of any utilities and services, facilitating the repair and maintenance of any part of the building, rights of support and airflow. Sixteen twenty-six, Queen Street East will have a frontage of eight point six-seven meters from Queen East and an area of one hundred seventy-seven point four-four square meters. Parts two and eight will be subject to an easement right-of-way in favor of parts one, two, four, five, six, seven, and nine for the purpose of facilitating the repair and maintenance of any utilities and services, facilitating the repair and maintenance of any part of the building, rights of support and airflow. I don't think there's any variances. Okay, so now we hear from uh Mr. Pister or Mr. Lopez?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, Committee. Um, my name is Benjamin Pister from Marlin Spring. I am here on behalf of the applicant, uh, which is sixteen thirty Queen Developments Limited, located at two Saint Clair Avenue West, the sixteenth floor. Um, do you want me to go over a summary of the proposal?
Could you just give us your address first?
Sure, address is twenty-six zero-three Bathurst Street, where I reside.
Okay, yes, just give us a very brief summary of what this is about, because there is some opposition.
Sure, no problem. So, the proposal that is being presented presented before you today um is to sever a group of existing freehold commercial units, um currently under one ownership. Um, the freehold commercial component was formed at the at the time of completing draft plan of condominium um for this building. Um, and so the purposes, the purpose of this particular application is to effectively uh create two additional freehold commercial units. Um, each unit would be operated under separate ownership, um, and there would be a reciprocal agreement um amongst the owners and with the condominium. So, the first, sorry.
Are these buildings up?
Yes, the building, the building is up. It is one one building, one condominium building with uh residential condominium building with retail, uh, sorry, commercially used at grade.
So, there's no.
Construction is completed.
Yeah, so no physical alterations from what exists. It's merely to clean up the paper and ownership?
Correct, this, yeah, correct. It's it's technical in nature.
Okay, all right. Uh, panel, do you have any questions? Yes, Jim?
I I I only have one question, just clarification. I do not understand. Uh, you give the reasons for the severance, which is like maintenance and other items, I don't understand those. But what about the uh the airflow? What? What what is the airflow of what?
Uh, the intention is to allow for access uh for for maintenance, so so that's one of the items that 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 is being.
Yes, I understand.
The the.
The airflow, the uh uh reason number four, you've mentioned it quite a few times in your presentation material, so I do not understand what that means.
Uh, airflow would be, um, for example, a mechanical equipment um within this building that's um if there's any repair or maintenance required, then access would be permitted. Sorry, if any um maintenance is required, service is required for one unit, then access would be permitted within another unit. Um, so the use of airflow here, I guess, would be for um ma- maintenance of a mechanical equipment that is for for airflow.
But why the severance will affect that? Don't you need to have proper airflow anyway, even whether it is ser- severed or not in different property? I I just don't understand the reason that why that is part of it. Uh, because don't, I mean, you have to have proper airflow anyway, right?
Correct, correct. And the airflow, I mean, we we have, we definitely have proper airflow and 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 units have been designed by qualified mechanical engineer. Um, it's 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 more to ensure that we're covering all aspects. I think I think uh we're providing extra detail here to to ensure that we're covering all aspects of 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 this project and that the reciprocal ease uh agree easement agreement would essentially ensure that there's all access to all pieces of 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 the building.
Okay, I I don't know. I don't, I still do not understand, but okay. I I guess it's part of the maintaining the mechanical system, I guess, uh, the ability to do that. But I I I still don't understand what the severance got to do with maintaining the airflow just. Um, but anyway, I accept your answer.
No, that's that, thank you. No, that that's fair. I think I think we're we're just providing a uh full, as ma- as ma- as many details as possible um in 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 what would probably be described in a reciprocal agreement that probably um doesn't necess- is not necessary for uh the purposes of the severance.
So, um, Amina Shirinji and or Rishi Shirinji?
Hi, uh, I was just interested in the severance, not really have any objection.
All right, uh, could you speak up a little? We need your name and your address for the record.
Uh, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Well. Yeah, speak into the microphone a little more. I'm having trouble hearing you. Hello?
Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, those are to the mic.
Thank you. My name is Amina Shirinji. I live at thirty Curzon Street in Toronto. Uh, I was just interested in the severance of the commercial units. Uh, I don't have any objection.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, panel, do you have any comments or do we have a motion? You're muted.
I can start with some comments, and of course, I I got a funny question and I got a funny answer, but uh 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 otherwise, I I I think I'm in support of the uh severance and also of the development because I think that that if it's in the neighborhood and 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 yeah, as uh he said, I think it's a good development and um it's really nothing that uh stands out for me to object, so I'm in support.
All right, so uh, are you making a motion? So, would you make a motion?
Uh, I I made other comments from Larry or Lisa?
No.
Okay, so I can make a a motion uh for uh to approve the severance with the development engineers uh uh conditions, consent conditions?
Yeah.
Uh, and also agree to all the variances, approve all the variances. Uh, I I do not see there's any.
There are no var- there are no variances. They're just severance conditions, severances.
Yeah, sorry, okay, that's it, yeah, just the consent conditions.
All right, do we have a second here? Lisa?
So, we've got the development engineering conditions, is that what?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Have your approval, thank you. Number twenty-nine, three thirty-two Holland Avenue. Purpose of this application Purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached fourplex by constructing a rear two-story addition, a rear and side third-story addition, a rear second-story deck, and a rear third-story deck. With this application, we have material submitted by the applicant, we have email correspondence from Transportation, and we have support from three thirty and three thirty-four Holland Avenue. Right. So, Marie Black?
Hello. Uh, Marie Black, one-ten Delaware, Toronto, A- Avenue, Delaware Avenue.
Okay.
Toronto.
All right.
And this is a, it, it, this was deferred in April, we had a meeting, we came to the committee, but with the two neighbors, we, I agreed to reduce the size of the third floor. So, the drawings have been revised to reflect what we discussed in the committee meeting, and I have included in the materials the two emails that the neighbors sent agreeing to the changes. And that's it.
Okay. All right, panel, do you have any questions? Okay.
Maybe just a little more detail on what's changed from then to now, it'd just be helpful for us.
Um, well, from, from the last committee meeting, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, in the, in the meeting, in the committee meeting, the neighbors kind of verbally agreed that if the third floor was reduced in size, they would accept the proposal, they were concerned about shadows. And so, I agreed in the meeting, but it had to be deferred so that I could do the drawings, so we did the drawings and sent it to the neighbors, and they've agreed that it's acceptable. They also were concerned, there's a very old and lovely pine tree, and they're, were concerned about tree protection for that, so I assured that, like we've undertaken to hire an arborist to be on site to make sure that that roots are protected during construction.
But urban forestry's involved as well?
I think they've been, yes, they've done their report, I, I don't think they had a problem-
I don't see any-
As of the last committee meeting.
Yeah, I don't see any condition from urban forestry, so I guess they're satisfied.
Yes.
All right, so, any further questions, Larry?
No, but I did, I did note that there's a forestry report from the last time it was before us, so I assume that those conditions would apply, it's like a forestry condition number two, unless I'm wrong.
Yes.
So, forestry condition number two applies? I don't think, wasn't on the current list, was it? The, the current ones that they sent around?
I don't think so, but I see it on the, you know, in the part of the deferred package that we have before us, so, I don't know, maybe Sabrina-
So, Ms. Black, did you-
Her staff can speak to it.
Yeah, did you have any further conversations with urban forestry that would change their mind?
No.
All right, so, I, 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 I think that Lisa's probably right for, for, just, just to be safe, that we should put, make it a condition, forestry condition number two, just in case it still applies.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all right, panel, do we have any further comments or do we have a motion? Lisa?
Uh, yes, I'm happy to bring forward a motion for approval, I think it's nice to see neighbors working together, I did note that the applicant had pulled the third floor at the rear back a bit to accommodate the neighbor's request, and I think that's a good thing. So, based on that, I think the variance is the foretaste and it'll fit in with the current neighborhood, so I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval, and I'd like to make it subject to urban forestry condition number two.
I was seconding that.
Second it, all in favor? Okay, you have your approval, thank you. Number thirty. Fifteen, Highview Crescent. Purpose of this application is to obtain consent to sever the lot into two residential lots. Part one, the lot will have a frontage of twenty-one point eleven meters and an area of one hundred and eighty-seven point seventeen square meters. A new three-story detached dwelling with a side basement, walkout, and a front yard parking space will be constructed and will require variances. Parts two and three, the lot has a, has a frontage of nineteen point six meters and an area of two fifty, two hundred and fifty-six point one eight square meters. The existing three-story detached dwelling with three secondary suites will be maintained and will require variances. Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
Good evening.
Good, good night.
Ah, hopefully. Been a long day for you, I can't begin to imagine.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Sean Galbraith, I'm a planner here on behalf of the application, One Young Street, Unit eighteen oh one.
Okay, so, we have a lot of opposition, perhaps you could tell us about this, and, and I'm sure you know what the, your opponent's concerns are, perhaps you could address them a little bit?
If I might ask that the supporting materials letter be brought up onto the screen, please? It has some illustrations that I think are, are helpful. That should be the right one. So, the existing property is a large triangular-shaped lot. It was originally, back when, back when the properties were first platted, it was originally two lots, and the severance seeks to restore that original north-south lot division between Lot sixty-one and sixty-two, with the exception of a, where the, that's a great one there, thank you. So, the north-south lot line roughly corresponds with the original lot line between Lot sixty-one and sixty-two, and then where it takes the jog towards the street, that jog was put in so that both the retained lot and the conveyed lot would meet the minimum lot frontage requirements under the zoning bylaw. The, the orientation of the new house, which is only about sixteen hundred square feet in size, it's very small from a, from a contemporary house perspective, has been entirely designed to minimize the impacts on twenty-nine Highview to the north. The way that this was done is essentially flipping the yards. So, under the zoning bylaw, this house would be permitted to be up to forty-five centimeters if it has no windows on it, from the north side yard adjacent to Highview. Recognizing that that would be the most impactful way to design this project, it was, it was deemed much more reasonable to shift it towards the existing house on fifteen, and it basically created a nor, a, a rear yard where it's technically a side yard across from, from twenty-nine, to really try and maximize the protection of views, protection of light, and to minimize and mitigate to the extent possible the, the, this new building on that existing neighbor. And so, that's what's sort of creating the large rear yard setback variance, the rear yard is technically, according to the zoning bylaw, that north-south lot line, not the one that is adjacent to Highview, that is a side yard. And so, again, notwithstanding that it was going to create a larger variance, it was done with, in a good faith effort, to minimize the impact on neighboring, on the neighboring property. And I, I think a generous side yard setback is, or rear, rear yard setback is, is sort of provided there. For the existing fourplex at fifteen Highview, that will largely be maintained as is, with the exception of a bay window in the space between the proposed new house, on the west side of the existing fourplex, that will be removed to allow for some additional separation. There's a lot of concern regarding the street, the street trees, that shape of the house, if you can go to page seven, please, the shape of the house was specifically designed to mitigate impact to the trees. You can see there, in that little sketchy drawing from the arborist, that notch that was put into the front wall of the proposed house was designed to step it away from the tree protection zone for that existing tree. And in the original application, but before it was deferred back in the spring, and it was deferred because there was an error in the number of required parking spaces for the retained lot, i.e. the fourplex. At that time, there was the standard urban forestry conditions. Since that time, we have, we've already addressed those conditions by submitting the requisite applications to the urban forestry, and we received a letter in August saying that those conditions have been met, and I don't believe you have any conditions in front of you today as a result. The only conditions are from engineering, which are the standard consent, consent conditions. There's also concern regarding parking in the area, and this is, this is an area where transit access is, is quite significant with three bus lines less than a minute walk away, and subway stations, you know, not a significant distance away. And Highview Crescent is somewhat unique in that the street parking permit program is on, you, you have to live on the street to get a parking permit on this street, it isn't a wider area permit system that you see in other parts of the city. And in this case, there are twenty-nine permit spaces in total for Highview, of which only fifteen have been issued, so there is sufficient on-street parking permit, permits available to accommodate the modest reduction in parking spaces proposed. The, the applicant from the start has been really, I think, above and beyond in terms of consulting with neighbors. Prior to the application being submitted, they reached out to the affected neighbor at twenty-nine, sorry?
Mr. Galbraith, your, your time is up, if you could wrap up, please?
Okay, I just wanted to say that the, the public consultation that has been undertaken for this project is probably the most extensive of any project of this scale that I've ever worked on, including staking out the footprint of the building on the lot so people could see how small it is. I think that the, meets the application requirements under the Planning Act for Consents and for minor variances, and I'm happy to address any questions that come up from neighbors.
Yes, Yim?
Actually, I, I do have a question before you, the neighbor that come in, the question is the planning report, I know that you, you said it superseded it on May twentieth, talking about one of the conditions, the permeable paving materials on the new driveway, and is it only the new drive? I, I think it's still applicable for, for not, for this revised drawing, drawings, and also-
We're absolutely happy to-
Okay.
Apology.
And also, there's a walkway too, right, to the new house, and existing driveway, is it a driveway to the, to the, to the existing house? Are those all-
Yes.
New materials that you're, you're ready, you're, you're, you're willing to put, make them as permeable material?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
It is an existing, there is an existing parking space in front of the fourplex, and the owners are happy as a condition to, to require permeable pavers on both properties.
Okay, that's what I, I'm-
The owner, the owner currently, currently lives in the fourplex and will be moving into the new house if, if it is approved.
Yeah, the reason is because it wa, it, it, now, as it exists, it's like a soft landscape, right, for the whole site, that maybe it is a good way to mitigate the, the impact.
I agree, and, and we would be absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
Ms. Taylor, Mr. Price?
Hi there.
Hi.
This is Carolyn Taylor. And I just wanted to sort of echo what I had written in-
Could we have, could we have, Ms. Taylor, could we have your address for the record?
Yes, I live at thirty-nine Highview Crescent.
Okay. Could we have your comments?
Yeah, one comment I have is that we, we were not approached or consulted at any point in this, I mean, we do live a number of doors down, but that's one thing I would like to point out, I had written a letter in response to the application when it was first supposed to happen, and I think I sort of just share some of the concerns that others had written in, mainly that, that the proposed house, I think, is sort of out of keeping with the neighborhood, I have very big concerns about it blocking light and being too close to that, that house that's adjacent to it, I have a concern about the increased density of cars, there's already a number of cars that park on the one parking pad that I believe is only supposed to have one car on it, so I worry about just the, the volume of, of cars and the safety in terms of those cars, it's a bit of a blind corner, and there are a lot of children on the street, and then I think our predominant concern is about the trees, I just, when I look at it and walk by, I cannot envision how building a home in that location could not impact those large trees in front of it.
All right, thank you, panel, any questions? Okay, Ms. Stewart, Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, hello?
Yes.
This is Kate Stewart. On the line with me is my husband Brett Dawson, and we live at number twenty-nine Highview Crescent with our two daughters. Good evening, committee members, and thank you for hearing our views on this issue. Our house is directly north of number fifteen, our position is that the proposed lot severance and zoning variances go directly against the zoning bylaws and the principles laid out in the official plan, they also affect us very directly. According to the official plan, neighborhood development is intended to be sensitive and gradual with little visible change and with the neighborhood density and character remaining intact. The proposed development adds a brand-new detached house to the middle bend of Highview Crescent where it will be very visible, it will remove the existing side yard for number fifteen so that neither number fifteen nor the new building will have any real yard, which is out of keeping with the other properties on the street, virtually all of which have front and backyards. Mr. Galbraith points to some oddly shaped lots in Regal Heights, I would offer that houses with differently shaped yards are by far the exception, especially on Highview, his example properties would have been developed before the official plan and the zoning bylaw, so using this as precedent really doesn't seem valid. The official plan specifies that impacts to new, by new development on light, shadowing, and privacy are to remain minimal. The proposed development would mean that we would look directly at the north wall of the proposed new building from every story of our house. There are windows in the proposed new house that would provide visibility directly into our bedroom on the third floor, my daughter's bedroom on the second, and our dining room on the main floor. We have eleven windows on the south wall of our house, the new building would be visible from every one of them, and in almost every case, our views would be blocked. The shadow created by the proposed building will significantly limit our morning and afternoon sunshine, and while we appreciate the attempt to minimize the impact on our property, the residents at number fifteen would also have their eleven west-facing windows entirely blocked by the back wall of the house. This will make the four existing living spaces there considerably worse, while the single new space steals all the, all their existing sunlight. new space steals all the, all their existing sunlight. The owner plans to live in number seventeen, which will have the full benefit of the sun and the view of the street. In Mr. Galbraith's submission, he states that the proposed front yard setback variance considers our enclosed front, front porch as the line for the setback. He wonders whether our porch is a habitable insulated space. I can confirm that it is not, and so it can't be considered for the rest of the house. The proposed development does not adhere to the city's principle of adding extra units in neighborhoods without significant impacts. Unlike a garden suite or laneway house, the proposed building is not lower scaled than the primary house. It is not tucked behind the existing property, but rather wedged in between our two houses and facing the street. It seems overbuilt and ungainly. With respect to whether the proposal is appropriate for the development of the land, the arborist's report explains the need for extensive protections to try to preserve the trees on the lot. There's also a request to injure two of the trees, both by removing large parts of the canopy and by cutting through roots. We're concerned that the proposed measures will poorly affect the tree's long-term well-being. As you'll have read in the many letters of opposition from our neighbors, this is a deeply felt concern. The tree canopy is a very important part of how the residents of Highview enjoy the experience of the street. With respect to whether the variances requested are minor, these don't constitute minor variances to my mind. In addition to the setbacks and lot splitting, the FSI exceeds the current permitted density. The bylaw prohibits an entrance to a secondary suite in the front wall of a house. Yet another variance has been sought to allow one. The front yard parking is another variance. The bylaw requires a minimum of three parking spaces, and only one is proposed. There are regularly four or five cars parked on the property. Those cars will need space on the street. It's important to note that the parking permits for our street only allow parking on Highview itself and not surrounding streets, and spots are already in high demand. I would like to call out as well that most of the letters sent in support of this project are not from Highview residents. The owner and landlord of number thirteen, for example, doesn't even live in Toronto. We would characterize the applicant's attempts to engage with the neighborhood as a little bit disingenuous. There's a sign, there was a Zoom meeting, and most recently, a YouTube video was made about the plans, but there has not been an invitation to discuss significant changes to the project. When we have raised objections, the owner has simply indicated that if he doesn't succeed here, he intends to appeal to a higher body. To conclude, while we respect that the applicant stands to profit considerably should the severance and new build be approved, it would also fundamentally alter our enjoyment of our own home and the enjoyment of those who live at number fifteen, and it threatens the natural surroundings of the street. When we moved in, in 2011, we never conceived that someone would attempt to put a three-story house on the small triangle of land directly in front of our south wall, and we would certainly have expected that the city bylaws would protect against such a development. Thank you.
Ms. Rayo? Yes.
Am I muted, or can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Bear with me. Good evening, and I'll try to be brief for all, all our sakes. I live at fourteen Highview Crescent, across the street from...
Can we have your name, please? Hello? Can we have your name for the record?
Margaret Rao, R-A-O, fourteen Highview Crescent.
Thank you.
Um, I'll begin with the, the following. The request from the owner, who, who currently lives on the premises alongside his tenants, to build a second three-story house with a full basement and only one parking space is much more than a few minor variances as stated in the application. And by the way, we waited a few months ago for our, to speak our mind, and I don't know why it was deferred, and we're last on the list tonight. I don't know how that happened. I'm deeply concerned about the current tenant's and the family home adjacent's loss of wind, the window view, as the new build would block almost entirely their side view of the street. Both houses have multiple windows that would be obstructed by the proposed build. This loss of window view and natural light is unacceptable to my mind. Secondly, the proposed build would eliminate almost entirely the front yard green space we all enjoy on our street, and also put in jeopardy the two mature trees, one of which is an endangered elm, standing on either side of the proposed build. I'm not an arborist, but I don't believe the trees would survive the deep dig just a few meters from where they currently stand. This would be a terrible loss to our streetscape. This year alone, we lost two more mature trees on that side of the street. There are very few trees original to Highview remaining, and I've lived there since nineteen seventy-nine, and I know people who live in our street from the fifties and sixties. Thirdly, fifteen Highview Crescent is situated on the crescent curve of the street. The curve is already a bit of a blind spot for oncoming vehicles and bicycles. Street parking is also at a premium from one end to the other, and so parked cars and trucks make the turn more hazardous to pedestrians as well. Fourthly and finally, though more could be said, my husband and I walk our young grandchildren home from school each day with our little red wagon and tow. We enjoy our leisurely walk down Highview Crescent and would be very upset to have this pleasant walk home at the end of the day turn into a noisy, dusty, and even dangerous construction zone as we wend our way home. I hope the Committee of Adjustment decides once and for all not to allow the, the construction of an unwanted and unneeded build on an otherwise quiet, family-and, and dog-friendly street, and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. Ms. McWinnie? Yes. Can we have your name and your address, please, for the record?
Certainly. My name is Larissa McWinnie, and I live across from the proposed build site at thirty-four Highview Crescent. If, if for any reason you can't hear me, please, committee members kindly raise a hand or something.
No, no. We can hear you very well.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to say that I think it's a bit curious or disingenuous of, of Mr. Galbraith to suggest that this is a restoration of the neighborhood to its historic state in terms of lot lines. I just looked up the lot lines from nineteen oh-three and nineteen-ten and nineteen-thirteen, I think, ones that I could easily access, and indeed, they were north-south at a certain point on that corner, but with completely different configurations. So to imply in any shape or form that the new severance of, of the proposed lot would bring it back to its historical state is entirely false. To my presentation, despite the fact that this proposal is virtually quote-unquote "in my backyard," my opposition does not stem from NIMBYism. I own my house by the skin of my teeth and will be in debt indefinitely. I may have to move as soon as my two daughters are finished school, and my children will most likely not be able to afford housing in Toronto, let alone in this neighborhood, despite the many generations of our family that have lived in this beautiful city. In short, for the sake of my own family as well as countless others, I support increasing density in Toronto neighborhoods, i.e. the yellow belt, such as secondary suites, laneway units, and so on. But more important than density is affordability. Severing a lot to create an ultra-luxury, family-unfriendly, unaffordable, unaffordable soldier house for an executive couple is not in keeping with the city's middle, missing middle strategy, nor in keeping with this neighborhood. The agent will argue that building an executive dream home in the side yard of fifteen Highview will make the upper suite of the existing fourplex where the applicants currently live available to other needy renters, thus increasing middle, missing middle density. However, the upper floor of the existing fourplex is also a luxury suite, out of reach for most Toronto residents renting, as it does, for a whopping $4,000 a month. All that to say that severing a neighborhood lot to build a luxury home simply to free up a single luxury apartment does not seem to be a rational trade-off with regard to city choices. In the words of a former city planner with decades of experience, putting two Starbucks in place of a Tim Hortons is not going to make coffee cheaper. A counterexample to the current proposal is Starlight's plan to add twenty-two suites to an existing footprint at two Regal Road, thereby increasing affordable density without severing lots or paving paradise. Similarly, some city residents are converting affordable garden and laneway suites for elderly relatives and others in need, rather than building luxury homes for themselves. And the irony in this case is that the applicants would only reside in their luxury build for part of the year, as they are snowbirds. Again, I for, I quote the former city planner, who said the following in two thousand nineteen: "Houses on severed lots optimize owner benefits." This is an aggressive form of intensification. "The greatest need," this planner says, "is for small rental units, which might include plexes and conversion of underused space in neighborhoods on a microscale." "Land severance," he continues, "is not the way to go unless variances are minimal," which they are not in this case. A recent article in Smart Density says the following: "Will the missing middle be allowed everywhere in the yellow belt? The answer: Probably not. Missing middle housing and low-rise apartment buildings will likely be allowed in minor arterials, e.g. Christie Street, which is twenty meters wide, but not along small and narrow residential streets, which Highview Crescent is." The article adds, "Most missing middle units, especially laneway suites and plexes, will be rental properties, which the proposed build is not." Quick note on parking. The owner's agent has made two points. Firstly, that the proposed, proposal will meet the city's goal of reducing parking on residential properties, and secondly, that it complies with the city's policy of only one parking spot per residential unit. To the first point, the proposal will not magically decrease existing parking by decreasing spaces. It will simply encourage illegal crowding of single spots and punt parking to the street, which only has twenty-nine spots in total. My submission shows that five cars routinely park at fifteen Highview, two of them on the parking pad in the front yard, which is designated for one car only, and which the owner was only allowed to build after appealing, since he had an existing driveway and garage, which is where the three other cars routinely park. The owner states that he was just doing favors for friends and tenants, but whether the cars are his or others, there would be no need for five cars to park on his property if there were sufficient parking elsewhere. Adding more dwellings while reducing parking is therefore counterintuitive, and the parking reduction is not for the purpose of adding green space or any other good reason. On the contrary. To the second point, the city's policy is one parking spot per residential dwelling, not per residential unit, as the agent incorrectly stated. The proposed build, in conjunction with the existing fourplex, creates a total of five residential dwellings, but only two spots will be provided by both severed properties combined. That leaves the combined properties three parking spots short. In other words, there is no way in this case, in my mind, to justify the parking variance by appealing to the city's goal of reducing car traffic. And the agent's conflation of residential units, implying that there would only be two, with residential dwellings of which there would be five, is misleading at best.
All right. Ms. McWinnie, Ms. McWinnie, your time is up. If you could wind up, please?
Certainly, I will. Another thirty seconds. In terms of my own household, I purchased thirty-four Highview specifically because of the space around it. It has a wide backyard and an expansive view of the trees and light from the side yard of fifteen Highview. An imposing three-story infill would dramatically change our surroundings and enjoyment of our home, not to mention the monolithic and highly visible north wall that would be a constant eyesore, and out it all in keeping with the neighborhood. I respectfully request that the committee reject this application and support less aggressive ways to generate affordable dwellings for future generations that do not threaten other meaningful city goals. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Sinelli?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, my name is Elizabeth Cinello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I live at number sixteen Highview and have lived here with my family for almost forty years. Our house is south of fifteen Highview. I will not repeat what my neighbors who oppose this development application have already said or will say. We agree in our opposition. Properties on the street have similarly sized lots, frontages, and backyards. Severing fifteen Highview Crescent, creating a small lot and adding an oversized house to it, will create a glaring anomaly on the most important part of the street, its curving crescent, and will create two houses that do not conform to the built environment on the street or to zoning bylaws. My street will never feel the same. I have counted over twenty letters objecting to this application. This is a good indication of how the residents of Highview feel about the project. Despite the applicant's many attempts to convince neighbors to support the project, referred to as community consultation, he was unable to convince the street to do so. In fact, the letters of support for the project are form letters. None express a benefit to the street. Of the nine letters of support I saw on your website, five letters are signed by people who live as far as a one-point-three kilometers away on Boone Avenue and only as close as three-hundred-and-fifty meters away on Rosemount. The rest are about over half a kilometer away. The letters from Alberta Avenue are separated by a major street, Oakwood Avenue, and as the letter from Boone Avenue are located many blocks west, or Boone Avenue is located many blocks west and north of St. Clair and Deafren. If I understand correctly, development projects are only required to notify, to notify people living within a hundred-and-twenty meters from the proposed project. I don't understand why these art, these letters are even submitted. They should not be considered. The shape of the lot. This area, generally called Regal Heights, was once considered a site for Hyde Park because of its hills and vales, the presence of Garrison Creek, and most importantly, the escarpment present along the north side of Davenport Road, which is particularly noticeable in our area and forms a ridge along Davenport. Once the area was slated for development, its geography became the curving streets and the hilly streets and the crescent streets like Highview. Odd-shaped lots accommodate these features, especially on Spring Mount, Mount Royal, Regal Road, Oakwood, and Tom. We also see houses perched against or up on the hills. Fifteen Highview is not the only triangular-shaped lot, as the submission notes, with a side yard. Sixty-two and sixty-four Oakwood, a purpose-built duplex, and possibly the first in the area, is similarly shaped. It's on the corner of Highview and Oakwood, and together with fifteen Highview frame the street with trees and a lawn. A change to fifteen Highview would alter the landscape symmetry. The smaller properties referred to in Mr. Galbraith's supporting material, like all the properties in the area, were built during the development of the neighborhood begun over a hundred years ago and fit into the unique landscape with lot divisions forced by the geography. Eleven Highview, which Mr. Galbraith says has no backyard, is so unique that it sits in the middle of its lot and is surrounded by yardage, including rear and sides and especially ample front yardage. The examples given on Regal Road are built up into a hill and are set back from the sidewalk. They are old houses built during the development of the area. This is true for thirty-two Regal Road granted an FSI variant of one-point-one-eight. Because of their hillside location, these pre-existing properties do not impact the street the way a new house on Hyde, on Highview would do. Mr. Galbraith's examples of properties that have been granted FSI variances are applied to existing lots and existing houses, as are all the houses referred to in his examples. They have ample setbacks from the street. Each of these streets and examples is uniquely different and are not relevant to Highview Crescent. In addition, except for Tom Avenue, which is three-hundred-and-fifty meters away, they are all about five-hundred meters away. Many are either located on a hill or up against a hill or on Oakwood Avenue, which is a busy street with residential houses, properly set back from the sidewalk, a feature that was important even a hundred years ago. All the property examples put forward were built in the na, um, when built in the neighborhood, when the neighborhood was built, and they are well fitted to their unique locations. The position and shape of the new house on the new lot is out of keeping with the rest of the street. In fact, the original developers of the area stuck on, stuck a house wherever they could, wherever they could, but didn't do it at fifteen Highview Crescent because they couldn't do it and keep the integrity of the street.
Ms. Cinello, Ms. Ms. Cinello, your time is up. If you could wrap up, please?
Sure, sure. Thank you. I just want to point out that the impact on fifteen Highview is so dramatic that a bay window, a feature of the existing house, must be removed to accommodate the new structure. If the applicant didn't already own this house, this would never be considered. The trees will be injured. We're very concerned about that, and as far as parking goes, Highview is at a disadvantage. Drivers on other streets, Oakwood and Spring Mount, are allowed to park on Highview. Highview drivers have nowhere else to go, so I hope the committee will not allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gill, Mr. Jones?
Yes, hello. We live at, I'm Rosalind Gill and my husband Peter Harris-Jones. We live at twenty-four Highview Crescent, which is straight across the street from the proposed build, and I can only repeat what my neighbors have said. We are all against the... We are all against this.
Please don't, please don't, please don't repeat what your neighbors said. It's awful late. Perhaps you could just tell us the impact on you.
Well, the impact on us is this beautiful green space that we're looking, have been looking out on since nineteen eighty-two will be gone, and it will cause traffic density on the street. These beautiful trees across the street from us are never going to survive this building. And it's just a money grab. I don't see any virtue to this project at all. It's going to ruin our street. For what? I'll stop there.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Pamela Hall. I live at thirty-one Highview Crescent with my husband Peter and my three children. I'm not going to reiterate everything that everyone has said. I concur with everything that has been said very passionately and intelligently and articulately this evening. I, my, my take on the project that this is a case of a build that resembles an attempt to put ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag. I work with a design firm. I've built my own home. I understand variances, et cetera. This lot, as it's being called, is more of a side yard. It does not warrant a house at all, a dwelling. It doesn't appear that this side yard was ever intended for a dwelling, based on the extensive variances that the petitioner is requesting. I also have concerns about the parking. We do have, my husband parks on the street. We have, as I said, three children. It is, at best, some days, very difficult to get a parking spot. Sometimes we can't, and we have groceries, et cetera, so that makes it very inconvenient. And especially at night, this is the only place that we can park. There was some renovations that were completed across the street from us, and the construction that's been going on for two years has made it a lot more difficult for parking, as well as COVID. More people are home, myself included, so we're not driving and we need those parking spaces. I, again, I just would like to concur with everyone. I live one house, I'm sorry, two houses north of the proposed building site. I walk on this beautiful street. We've lived here since two thousand and thirteen, and the trees, et cetera, the old character of this street was one of the reasons why we purchased this street. My children have grown up here and are continuing to grow up here, and I am, myself and my family are adamantly opposed to a build at all on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garfunkel, Mr. Rubach?
No.
Hello?
It's us.
Hello?
Yes.
I live at number fifty-six Highview. My name is Dorothy Garfunkel. I have nothing more to add, other than to concur with the comments made by the neighbors on this street. So I will not spend any more of your time repeating the same arguments, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gailbraith?
I think the majority of comments were simply about putting a, about putting a new house on, on the property, that people have enjoyed looking at, almost in a park-like setting, which I can, I certainly can appreciate, but it's, it's a private yard. It isn't a park. Letters of support from the street, eight letters of support from houses on the street have been submitted. The, I've already addressed the parking consideration, that there are sufficient parking permits available for this street. There was a comment about the number of parking spaces that are, the size of the variance. Only two parking space variances, or two, a variance for two parking spaces is required for the existing fourplex. Even though it is a total of five units, five units only triggers four parking space requirements. Two additional cars can be accommodated on this street with existing parking permits. And if the city wished, it could, it could exclude this, these properties from being able to access the parking permit system if the city wished. In terms of the trees, again, that is the purview of urban forestry. These are all city trees, and so the owner could not injure them without city permission regardless. And urban forestry is so far satisfied that we have submitted the required materials to, to address their concerns. And I don't believe there is a, an urban forestry condition request as part of the revised package. If you saw fit to include such a condition, we would obviously have no problem with that. We've already satisfied it. With regards to privacy to the property to the north, again, the, the proposed house has been designed entirely with, you know, maximizing distance away from that property as possible. If, if there was, if the house, the existing fourplex was demolished, a brand-new house could be built on the very, very large property, forty-five centimeters away from twenty-nine Highview with, with no variances at all. We're providing, I think, over four meters, I think, separation distance from it. The owner is, would be fine with the condition that any north-facing windows be frosted or that there be no north-facing windows at all. The north-facing windows currently are, are very minimal, and so it's, either, either as a condition would be, would be, would be fine. With regards to other lots, there are a number of other oddly-shaped lots in the, in the community. Again, these sort of corner lots. This is the only one that hasn't been split into multiple lots like is proposed. There's no risk of contagion because there is no other lot like this. All the other lots have, already have multiple houses on them in odd and curious configurations. Odd and curious configurations are part of the neighborhood character of this area. And as I note, that there are no variances required for the lots themselves. There's no lot frontage variance, and there are no lot area variances. The lots themselves are permitted by zoning from that respect. They're not undersized lots. And as such, I don't believe the proposed new house, at, again, only sixteen hundred square feet, I don't think that that is a ten-pound sack of potatoes on a, in a five-pound bag. I think it's, it's entirely appropriate. It's architecturally, architecturally, it fits with its character very well. I think that it is designed to blend in with the existing character really well and not be a, a modern structure that would really, really stand out. I think care has been taken to design a building that will fit its context extremely well and be sensitive to the adjacent neighbors to the north, be sensitive to the trees, and I believe that the variances requested are, are all minor and appropriate. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions, panel? Okay. Go into committee. Any comments?
Well, I'm happy to start, bleeding edges were. I, I have a few comments that I want to make. The first is that I, I wanted to, first of all, acknowledge everyone who took the time to write and call in. Your comments are very appreciated. I was on the panel a few months ago when this came at the end of the day, and it got deferred, so I, I know everyone was frustrated not being able to share their views then, so we were delighted to hear them today, so thank you all very much. Particularly, Ms. Cinello made a couple of points, and I'll raise this with the agent and with the owner. Again, there are some letters of support on file. We had this issue earlier today. There's letters of support on file from residents which appear to be some distance away from this application. And I, I personally find, when I see those, those being very unhelpful, because it doesn't to me reflect anyone's opinion on the impact of that development on them personally. So that's not helpful, but I did acknowledge that, as Mr. Gailbraith said, that there were some late submissions of support from people who live on the street, so that's appreciated. In my view, this is a developable lot. I'll just say that right up front. It, it's a, it's a relatively large lot. It is vacant right now. It is developable, and I, I don't see, quite frankly, in some respects, I doubt very much that anything that was proposed on this lot is going to satisfy the residents. I think people just like having that, that portion of a side yard open and don't want anything in there. And I even acknowledge, you know, some people said, well, this isn't affordable housing. Well, I'm not sure people would necessarily want a fourplex or a sixplex in there either, so it is developable, in my view. I thought the design that the applicant has brought forward compared to what was brought forward the first time is dramatically better. It does set back from the house that is particularly most affected. I do take the point that a house that would be, take up that whole lot could actually go a whole lot closer and probably a whole lot higher. So I thought the design was, was reasonable. It is only a sixteen hundred square foot house, so it's not a large house. It architecturally seems to be not inconsistent with some of the developments in some of the houses that are in that area. There are, you know, maybe we can attach some conditions or not, but I, I, you know, compared to where this started and where it is right now and the relative degree of public consultation that's occurred, and I appreciate that, you know, that consultation doesn't always lead to consensus, but it sure was better than what it started out to be. So, you know, my, my view is that this application is, has trended towards something that is more supportable relative to where it was, and, and I, I do believe that this is a developable lot, and I, 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 I think this is a reasonable development in that context.
I, I would agree. I have a hard time putting my finger on the negative impact on the neighbors, except that they're not happy, as Larry said, that this side yard is not going to be green space anymore, but it's going to have a house on it. I, I didn't know that in the city of Toronto you can't build a luxury home because it doesn't provide housing, low rent, affordable housing. So I, I, I find some difficulty. I appreciate that it's a large change in the neighborhood and, and, but I, I can't see what negative impact it has from all the people that spoke. I have a great deal of difficulty. So I, I, I think this is a supportable application.
I can wait in too. It's just, I'm getting very tired, but I appreciate Larry's analysis. Actually, even before that, I, maybe because we are not the next door neighbors, then we do not, I, I know that it is a big change, but then when I look at it objectively, it seems that that's like, it's like, almost like an infill project. It seems that the site can be developed, I can be pushing something there, but it's, as you say, I think that it's, they actually have gone a long way from the previous proposal to this one, and it, 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 it's difficult to say what is appropriate compared to there's nothing there, right? So I feel that the new proposal is actually forming a continuity almost when it turned the corner from the perspective of us architecturally only. I'm not talking about whether I like it or not, but architecturally, it seems that it has a gap, and then it's just, it's just filling the gap. And, and that, I, I, I see Mr. Chairman also saying, I try to listen to the real impact. The, 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 most of the comments are talking about, they just, one comment saying that almost from every floor of their house, they can see this house. Of course, you can see that because it was never there before, right? So I do not see that it's an impact or whether they just don't need to see something. So I, I, I find some, I try to find something that I cannot support, but I cannot find it, and then I'm also in support.
Lisa, do you have any comment?
I might as well wait in as well. You know, originally when I read the application, I was on the fence. I did go visit the site, and I was surprised. I, I appreciated the fact that the applicant actually staked out the lot, the area of the house, so surprised at the footprint, and I thought that it fit well on the lot. So I was surprised by that. I think the applicant went, I didn't have the benefit of sitting on the previous, when it originally came before us, so I'm not exactly sure how it changed, but I was impressed with the amount of information that the applicant did make available to the public so that they could, the neighbors, so they could understand exactly what they were proposing to do. That goes above and beyond what we normally ever see, and this is my second term, so I've seen a lot of these applications. The other thing that struck me about this is, is yes, it is an oddly-shaped lot, but I was also surprised by the fact that there are no variances for lot size, no variances for, for frontage or area. And typically, that's what we tend to see for severances. So in my view, the fact that this meets a lot area and a lot size, albeit a slightly different configuration perhaps, because it's a, although Mr. Gailbraith has pointed out there are other triangular-shaped lots in the area. I, I think that a lot of effort was made to make sure it's going to be more compatible with the neighborhood in terms of setback, style. I think that it has been designed in the most sensitive manner possible so that there's less impact on the neighborhood than, than north. And I'm in support of the application and variances. Like I said, I, I take severances seriously because they tend to have an impact, but I, I, in this case, I think the lot sizes are generous, so it can handle what I think is a very modest development, sixteen hundred square feet. I mean, we see applications for much greater than this, so I'm in support of the application as well.
Larry, would you make motion?
Sure, I'm happy then. That's great, great comments, guys. I, I move a motion to approve this application. There, I guess you want to do severances and variances separately, Chair?
No, let's just approve the application.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
We'll do, thank you, do that. I, I did note that Mr. Gailbraith made the very generous suggestion of frosting the glasses, or the glasses, frosting windows on the north side, and I think if he's prepared, if his client's prepared to do that, I think that's, that would be helpful to the adjacent neighbor in some respect. So I'm, I'd like to maybe include a condition to that effect.
That's in the new house. Is it, Larry?
To the new house, yes. Pardon me, Chair, yes, to the new house. I did note that there was permeable pavers being suggested, both for the new build and to retrofit the existing house. I don't know whether we need to make that a condition or not, or whether that's, if we're satisfied that being in the site plans.
You need to, because I think that the planning department before, in the previous application, they put it as a condition.
Okay, so I'd like to approve the application for severance, approve the variances, subject to the condition on the frosted windows on the north side, and that both driveways for each unit be constructed out of permeable pavers.
You have a second, Chair?
I think that's it. I think, our forestry conditions are satisfied, I think.
Yeah. Second that, yeah?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Do we not have development engineering conditions as well for the numbering and the?
Standard severances?
Yes.
Well, I thought there was a condition here. There was.
There should be.
See it.
Send a deferred package again.
I didn't have the note.
The consent, there's always standard consent conditions.
Yeah, so why don't we just include the standard consent conditions that are?
There is a memo here, but okay, that's fine. I don't know, staff could speak to that, but yeah. And you're not doing the urban forestry conditions? We, we feel those are sufficiently satisfied.
Uh, I guess I'd, I'd ask staff, uh, for some, uh, advice on that. Do we need to include the forest, the, the former, the forestry conditions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It wouldn't hurt to include both the comments from ECS as well as forestry.
Okay. Then, uh, I'll, I'll amend it as such.
Okay, you're, you're okay with that, Jim? Okay, all, all in favor of the motion as amended? Have your approval, sir. Thank you. And we adjourn at nine fifty-eight PM. But it's still October.
We still haven't had supper yet.
Supper?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to do that.
Don, Don's got to get home. At least we're home.
Yeah.
Thank you, staff, for being so, um, great and late.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Have a good evening.